Welcome to the April 21st, 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education Work Session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Lucio.
Ms. Bratz.
Present.
Ms. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Unless there is an objection, we will dispense with a reading of the special meeting notice. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that the public portion of this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the public portion of this meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that we can feel that a technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, sir. Just a reminder, community members are welcome to attend Board of Education work sessions. However, there is not an opportunity to participate. And that brings us to discussion, Building Our Future. Dr. Smiley.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this evening about two very important considerations in front of our district. First would be consolidation, and second would be phasing of a bond issue. We, the last time we were in this setting, seems like four months ago, but it really wasn't, it was only approximately three weeks ago, and we determined that the 4-2-1 plan would be what we would pursue in terms of a master plan. And you adopted that that evening, five to nothing. We were very grateful for your support and participation in the process along the way. And so today, we're going to be talking about, so what else? And there's really some very big considerations moving ahead in terms of, again, both consolidation and what do we want to do in terms of pursuing a bond issue. Importantly, tonight is not a night that we need to make any decisions, so we hope that you will be very open-minded and contemplative, and we will certainly list all of your questions in an attempt to answer them as expeditiously as possible. And we have several meetings established to go through these considerations and can establish more if you want. These are very difficult decisions, very heavy decisions for the future of our community and the future of our district, and certainly we want to arm you with as much information as possible. The first handout that we have, either in your hard copy or if you want to click on the link that we sent this afternoon, it's just one I'd like to have you sort of put aside and take a look, or take a look and then put aside so that you can continue to see it. We're going to really embrace the mantra, build best instead of build around tonight. And what we mean by that is, we feel that when we consider consolidation proposal, we believe as a senior leadership team that the best path forward includes clearing as much property as we possibly can that is earmarked for facilities in the 4-2-1 plan. And we asked GPD to draw up a couple different scenarios, just so that we have Parma Senior High as a clear example. Now, I could have asked them to do all the properties, but again, they're working as volunteers at this point, so we knew that this would be illustrative of the concept, build best instead of build around. The top image shows the potential of what we can begin to really work with as a footprint for what we are calling the one high school that will have the most opportunities in the state of Ohio. And we say that very confidently because while there are other high schools with 3,000 or 3,100, or Lake Mason with 3,400, they don't also include 17 in-house career tech programs, which is a source of pride for our district. So we believe that as we look ahead to build the best high school or the high school with the most opportunities in Ohio, we should avail the most possible land to the construction of that. Meaning, we should demolish Parma Senior High immediately after the 2022-23 school year. The second image you see there is what we would be faced with if we had to build around. And I think there's a noticeable difference between those two concepts, between those two facilities. So again, we don't show you this tonight to say, this is the footprint. We know that there'll be much more conversation. The final plan wouldn't even come until you actually, you know, would pass a bond issue or we would pass a bond issue as a community. But in terms of pods, in terms of segments, in terms of really some of the concepts that we've discussed, we're going to have a lot more flexibility to create the building, the best works for our programming and our students, if Parma Senior High is no longer a consideration. So that's our mantra, build best instead of build around. And we ask you to keep that in mind as we move through our different consolidation proposals. The second handout, it says consolidation proposals at the top. It's also the second piece of your agenda that we emailed this afternoon. We looked at what we thought were six of the most practical models, five of the most practical models that we could put in front of you as considerations. Now, similar to when we looked at the red, the blue, the green, and the white models, we could end up with one of these models right on spot, or we could potentially begin to look at, you know, some type of small alteration to some of them. This is certainly not set in stone. But again, you've got to have a starting point. So when you look at this graph, there's, again, we talked about the core value, build best is better than build around. We also know that savings is really what is motivating this entire piece. As I've explained this to staff, we are motivated essentially by the 2026 financial forecast, the projection of a deficit, if we don't do something dramatic, of between $25 and $30 million. That deficit is motivated by A, or created by A, we haven't passed new money since 2011, and B, as our funding ends. So we know that ultimately, we're driven by the need to save money at this point. And we want to save money by spending less money operating 15 buildings. That allows us to preserve and protect programming for kids. So when people are to say, well, this is just a money decision, that's part of it, but it's because we want to use that money for better opportunities for kids. So one of the columns is indeed savings, and the savings is calculated by a pretty simple formula that has nine million variables within it. And we can produce this worksheet for you if you need to, but we looked at non-transfer costs, which, you know, as examples, utilities, maintenance, non-teaching staff, supplementals, et cetera. So as we shutter a building, we subtract all of that. Then we're going to add back 35% of costs of non-teaching staff. So in other words, when you close Parma Senior High, you're going to get rid of, or eliminate, or riff, or however you want to say it, a good number of staff, but as we move more students elsewhere, we can't, it's not a one-to-one margin. You're still going to need a 35% sort of skeleton of what existed at Parma Senior High in terms of monitors, in terms of principals, in terms of counselors, all of those things. So we added back 35%. So that's, that's the formula for our savings.
Was that just, was that, did that include teachers or just the other?
This is non-teaching staff.
Non-teaching staff.
Non-teaching staff specifically.
I just wanted to make sure.
Your special education assistants, your monitors, your maintenance, your custodial, your cleaners, all of those things.
Thank you.
Teaching, we've been pretty consistent in saying that, you know, that we're not looking to increase class size, this isn't going to take us to 34 in a class, we continue to operate with that mantra of 25 to 28-ish in classrooms. So this is non-teaching staff specifically. Couple other considerations before we go through these. First step is untouched until new construction is complete. That program is unique enough that we're not going to try to consolidate that into an existing facility. We do envision that when we're able to actually build new facilities, but we would not do that beforehand. Aces in central office, DIS, PAGE, which is our gifted enrichment program that we're looking at creating, and the print shop would actually all move to Renwood. In models that include the demolition of Parma Senior High, we are not going to ask our architect to design around any specific part. We're not going to say, let's keep the career tech programs and sacrifice what could be, again, the building and really the future facility that we think can be best for our kids and for our programs. So all of those need a place, and Renwood at this point seems to make the most sense. The other piece that I wanted to point out is that enrollment figures are averages per grade band, not exact numbers. So obviously, you're always going to have a bigger elementary at Pleasant Valley than you can have at other places. So those things said, and those are the common considerations, we have five models for you. There is a very clear model that we recommend, but we also know this deserves and needs more conversation and more discussion, and we're certainly open to that. First is the 6-2-2 model, six elementaries, two middles, two highs. Now, the middle changes to a five-to-eight model, similar to the model that we have in the 4-2-1, which is our projection. We would close Renwood, Green Valley, Shiloh, and Greenbrier. So your middles would actually be Parma Senior and Hillside. We've preserved Hillside in all of these because of the need to continue to make Seven Hills whole. That saves $3.1 million. An advantage is that all career tech locations are available. A disadvantage, we're only vacating one construction site, and we think that that's really a weakness of this plan. And again, that leads us to Parma Senior High being a build-around model instead of building best model. So while that's a model to consider, it's not one that we would recommend. The 5-2-2 model gives us Parma Senior, Renwood, Parma Park, Ridge Brook, and Green Valley closing. We recognize that Parma Park is a piece of Parma Heights' tax base, but we would also add that we're adding students to Valley Forge. Valley Forge will be about 300 students larger than it is right now, and Parma Park actually is less than 300 students. So we're still keeping Parma Heights clear, whole. This is the largest savings in terms of a projection, in terms of yearly savings. However, we think this is a poison pill. It requires an estimated 13 trailers at middle school sites. We don't envision that as being a good solution. We think that that would be a disservice to our children and to our families. So despite the fact that it's the highest savings, it would not be our recommendation. Flipping over is the first 5-3-2 model. We would close Parma Senior, Renwood, Parma Park, and Green Valley. This is a $4.2 million savings. Advantage, now we're getting the two construction sites that would be vacated, with Parma Park and Parma Senior High. And again, grade bands becoming the same as in future models is an advantage. We think there's a better 5-3-2 model, so we've highlighted that. It's in green if you have color or you're looking on the electronic version. We believe that our best model closes Parma Senior High, Renwood, Parma Park, and John Muir. It's $4.3 million in savings, which is actually our second-largest total in terms of savings. We vacate three construction sites, which allows us to build best instead of building around at all three of those sites. Grade bands would be the same as the future model. We did have a pretty extensive conversation about career tech, because obviously, Parma Senior High, we're not going to just leave a piece of it dangling and, again, ask the architect to build around it. Ms. Plageman is considering a number of different options. I will say that at first, I thought she wanted to jump off a cliff, but as we talk through it, there are definitely options within the district that we can be creative and continue to operate, would essentially be welding and carpentry would really be the two that we'd have to be creative. The auto program, we would be able to locate at Valley Forge, and they would split some space with the existing auto program there, but that's not a daunting proposal. Kristen was definitely amenable to continuing to look into the current facilities, knowing that we want to build best, not build around. The last one is a 5-2-1 model. Now, that, the advantage of that probably is that it comes closest to what we would eventually become, and so folks could make the argument that, don't you want to emulate the model that you're actually going to be? We can't be 4-2-1 because we just don't have enough room. That just would not be feasible in the current facilities. We could be 5-2-1, but here, here's the issue that we see with that. First, it would be a 10-12 model, and we don't love putting the ninth grade back into middle schools. A 5-9 model at 1654 per building is not attractive to us from a cultural or from an instructional standpoint. It would certainly present significant logistics in terms of extracurriculars and sporting It's a challenge to envision that working in our current facilities. It also requires transformation of our current central office into classrooms, because we would have 526 sort of extra students when we're looking at 25, 25, 10th through 12th grade, that we'd have to essentially kind of jam in somewhere. And we've really wanted to avoid the whole jamming in concept. We know that that's not what's best for kids. We want to be thoughtful, we want to be strategic. So while 5-2-1 comes closest to, you know, the 4-2-1 model, that's a real challenge to see those numbers, particularly at Parma Senior High, where we'd be putting considerable money into the central office to renovate that back into classrooms. And again, you're still stuck with the PSH becomes a build around instead of build best. And I know I've said it probably 14 times now, but there's a reason for that. The more land we can clear, allowing us to build best on as many sites as possible, stronger we think we are for our future, and not necessarily in the short term, but for our future, and I think that's an important consideration. So these are our, our models. We're happy to take questions. Some of them maybe we can answer now, some of them we can't. Again, I've said, you know, there's no necessary decision tonight, but we want to start accumulating as many facts. What I will show at the end is a timeline, and in the timeline, we ask for a resolution to this question of consolidation by June 9th. Now, that's an aggressive timeline, but in terms of starting to really put staffs together, to put administrative teams together, to really, our core value, our first core value is clarity, and to provide as much clarity for our district as possible, we're hopeful to wrap this up by June 9th. So that said, questions, comments, concerns, reactions, this is, you know, sort of a free-for-all really at this point.
Want to go right down the line?
Jack, you got anything? Put you on first.
Well, do you want to wait? It's a little overwhelming right now for what you're telling me.
Totally understood.
I, I'm still looking at all the alternatives. I do like the idea of build best. I do like that idea.
I do too.
Make that comment.
I might want to have the microphone down though.
Oh.
Repeat that.
I do like the idea that build best, and it is overwhelming right now. I don't have, I have to figure out what all these acronyms mean, which schools they are, but, but I, it seems to be a positive way forward.
I am very grateful we're having the conversation. I've said for quite a while now that this was the next step. I am, I will say it, I know we're supposed to be open-minded, but the last, there are two on here that I'm, I do not believe in any way, shape, or form that trailers would be an appropriate extended solution for our students. And then the 5-2-1 where we build around, one, that totally goes against what the build best would be, but two, I don't like breaking up the grade bands. And we had always said, you know, consolidating into one new high school is okay, consolidating into one existing high school was not the right thing. Also with this plan, I fear what happens if we start construction and then it's not done in time? We're, we're stuck, and we don't have buildings for kids to go into, and then we're, you know, we also live in Cleveland, so trailers are just not, not the best option. I do have a question. Would there be any allowances made for, just for conversation's sake, say we go three, or this 5-3-2, the green plan, or the one that's highlighted in green? Would there be any allowances for students who are going into, starting, who would be starting at Parma Senior High next year, to be transferred and start to Normandy or Forge next year, a year ahead of schedule, just so it's one less transition for those kids?
Yeah, it's a fair question. It's something we'd have to talk through. I mean, I totally understand it from a family perspective. We'd have to adjust some relatively large variables in terms of staffing, because we've staffed according to school of choice that's been open to this point.
Right.
So, you know, that deadline has come and gone. I understand, though, in terms of family saying, well, yeah, but this is a pretty big curveball you're throwing us. So that's a conversation we'd have to, have to talk through.
At least for clarity's sake, like, yes, we can do it, or no, and this is why we can't do it.
Yeah.
And also, in this, are we going to give what I assume would be this year's juniors? So they'll be going into their junior year this fall. Would we give them the opportunity to graduate a Redmond, even though they would technically finish their senior year at a different school?
Quite frankly, I think that's a lot easier variable to try to navigate, and that's definitely a conversation we can have.
Just to keep their, kind of those pieces whole. And then the money for removing any CTE programs. We have healthy PI funds, and that I assume is what would cover that?
It will. We're at $6.4 million as a balance right now. So yes, it's not a concern. I mean, in all honesty, we're, we're going to invest as little as possible, we're going to make it, you know, workable so that we can continue to offer the 17 programs. We're not necessarily building the best at that point, because they are a temporary solution, but we will have the programs, and they'll be funded by our PI.
I think that is, oh, busing. Are we going to change any busing structure for the high school going to two instead of three?
I think we'd have to have that conversation. When we talked about a two-high-school proposal for the last bond issue, we did say we would bus. So I mean, I think, consistent with that, I would, I would lean toward yes, but I think, again, we, we'd cost that out and be very specific about what that would look like.
Okay. I think that's all I have for right now. Steve?
Mark, you got something, please?
Um, yeah, just to clarify, is, this is a consolidation regardless of what happens with any future bond issue?
That's correct.
All right. Are we going to talk about, I mean, I, obviously, starting from a clean slate is always best when you're, but are we going to get into why, like, how we're building around would not be optimal, other than the obvious of, you know, starting from a clean slate is better?
We can. I mean, I, you know, I'm always cautious about how many times I go up the GPD tree and shake it for something that we're not paying for. So, I mean, I thought that this, these sketches were pretty compelling in terms of, you know, the differential and sort of how we can start to envision, but we can have further conversation about that. Are there any specific?
What would it look like, different, how different would it be if you built around as opposed to started new? I mean, because if it's a significant difference, I mean, it makes a difference.
That's what the drawing is.
Yeah, but that only shows like where they would start to build, and this is the other buildings removed, that's.
I think actually there is a, on the, if we went back to the old, when we were looking at old plans, like GPD two or three phases ago, weren't there prints that showed all three sites build arounds?
They were. Well, Parma, the other two high schools were built around. Parma Senior High wasn't going to be touched, because we, it was just going to be a central office and some other amenities.
I know, we still have.
Right.
We can, we can ask about the other sites. I mean, the other two sites that we would be clearing would be.
Are you just yet?
So the blue part would be the only, that would be the high school period? Or that's like the, as they started to build, and then knock the others down and then come around?
No, the blue, it says the blue would be the only new.
Is that two stories or one?
Yeah, that's it. That's all they'd be able to build.
Is it two stories or one?
Is it three?
That's three stories, actually.
Three stories.
Yes.
It would have to be three stories?
Yes.
That's really, that kind of limits us to if.
I was just curious with the build around, if they could, you know, I don't know, if they could start, you know, building in that and then move kids and then build out where the existing building is to make it the size of the other one, kind of similar to what like North Royalton did, where they demolished part of it while they were doing it and then, you know what I mean?
I honestly, and just off the cuff, I mean, my answer is they can probably do that. What we would push for, just from clarity from a school district standpoint, is make one change and live with it until we're building new. Because I think what you get into there is then, when are we going to close some of them? And if we're not really closing this, why, you know, to me, it's one fell swoop, or, you know, whatever.
No, I get, I was just like, I wanted, like, that's what the school was going to look like if we built around versus what the other?
So that was the first one, and remember, I asked them to do that piece, because you had asked, could we even fit one campus on the campus? And so the point in that was showing, we can, and we can do it while we're building around.
It's just not ideal.
But that, that's going to be a much more limited building.
That also, I think, would create a lot of.
Can we scroll down a little bit? Who's controlling that?
Pam.
So the outline here, this is the, what would be the new school, correct?
Yes.
So that's vaguely the, the school that's current.
And that's Longwood across the top and?
Longwood at the top, across the top, 54th down.
West 54th on the left.
Correct.
And if I'm looking at these right, Dr. Snyder can probably answer it better, but build best gives us the flexibility around the parking and egress that we really need, right?
Yeah, I mean, we.
Yeah, that addresses that part.
Again, the point is to show you that, you know, blank slate's going to allow us a lot better. We have communicated with GPD, in all honesty, given Carl's dedication to researching traffic patterns, I mean, I, I trust that they have a good traffic engineer too that we're going to meet with, but I really want, and I've said this to GPD, I don't want to get too far down the road, thank you for this, to show us the difference between the buildings, but we're really pressing pause until, you know, we can sit down as a team with their team, because I think, I think Carl has a lot of great ideas in terms of parking.
I guess, the only other point I would like to add is, is that I feel like clearing the slate, if we're going to do this and we're going to do it right, we have to do it all the way, and not, not, we can look back, you know, I know this is much more substantial than warm, safe, and dry, but all the times we've kicked the can down the road, and this to me is just one more way of kicking the can down the road to build around it, because we don't want to close it, and we don't want to do it, do it in its entirety the right way. That's kind of where my head went. Sorry.
My initial feelings are along the lines of, I can't even imagine not choosing build best over build around. If, to go through this entire process, to do a bond issue and request all of that money from our taxpayers, and then do something that's not the optimal plan that we can choose, doesn't make any sense to me. Obviously, there's a disruption in the educational programming for the next few years. I'm going to trust that you're going to do the very, very best possible to make that work for kids, but I can't in any way, shape, or form imagine not choosing build the best that we possibly can with, with the passage of a bond issue. That just is.
Oh, I agree with that.
It just doesn't even compute to me. And the same as Mrs. Carpus mentioned about the trailers, I'm not into those trailers, you know? I mean, I, I understand that they serve a purpose from time to time, and we've had them in our district many, you know, for many years.
Can I share just a brief, funny, funny story? At one point, because we, we had said, okay, so if the plan's 4-2-1, let's be 4-2-1. And we said, let's have the high school in Valley Forge, and we predicted that we'd need 30 trailers outside. And at one point, I'm like, yeah, that's what we need, it's 4-2-1, we're going to be 4-2-1. Yeah. Robert Hoon nicely calls it, what do you call it, the Parma High, or Parma Heights Estates?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, so I agree wholeheartedly, Ms. Bratz, we don't.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not attracted to that. Yeah, I would like a strong commitment to the busing in whatever we do, not just for this early consolidation, but in the final product. I, I don't want it to be, maybe we're going to bus. We, we've got to promise our community that we're going to do busing and make sure that our kids can get to school. If they can't get to school, they can't learn. So I'm, I'm really deeply committed to busing these kids as the distance grows for many of our families.
It's hard to see that, man.
I know.
I need to delete again.
I think, so anyway, without the, with that, it eliminates all but the first two on the second page. And I like the idea that the grade bands are the same for the future model, so that we're not bouncing kids around or staff and, and changing that. I think that, that builds some consistency at least that way. And I think that's it on this part so far. We covered. so far. We covered some of the others, but my initial reactions are, you got to build best.
My only concern, really, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, Steve, I just wanted to say, is that we adopt a temporary solution and it becomes permanent. You know, we did the bond doesn't pass and then we're, we're in a, we've committed to a temporary solution and we still end up with buildings with leaking ceilings and bad plumbing and water coming in through doors. That's my concern by, I mean, obviously, if I knew, if I knew the bond was going to pass, then yes, send the kids to two other high schools, clear the lot, build it as fast as possible in the best way. I just worry that there'll be complacency in it and we're still in the same situation with buildings that are, need to be really redone.
Yeah, and it was that
Do you want to consolidate it all?
No, 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 no. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm just, like, passing a, a plan saying that this is how we're going to consolidate, period, might become attractive to people who vote, who want to vote no, saying, fine, we consolidated.
But we have to, we have to consolidate to be able to
I know.
It was that mindset, honestly, that led us to really try to say, what could we do with Palmer Senior High as one?
Right.
But it boxes us in then, the build around, or, I shouldn't say or, I should say and, the piece about, you know, taking central office and investing, I don't know what the cost would be, but significant money into making that classroom. So, I, I agree. I mean, and Steve, you and I had an, you know, off-the-record conversation, let's, if we're 4-2-1, let's be 4-2-1. It just doesn't work, not in existing facilities.
Correct. I mean, I knew that. No, I didn't mean to steal your time, Steve, sorry.
No, I'm not stealing anything. I just was going to go last, so we can wrap up. So, anyway, so what appears to me, and from what everybody else is saying here on the board, is that this, the 5-3-2 model seems to be, appears to be the most logical. And I think as we move on, as we go through this process, that we have to use the process where we put logic in the place of our hearts. You can't have that heart feeling. Excuse me. I mean, I have a great affinity for one of the high schools and my wife another. So, I think we have to just put that aside and go with the most, what's most logical and what's going to be best for kids. And so, we've been talking about this for four years now. We're going to do what's best for kids. So, if we're going to, I'm looking forward to moving forward as a district and doing what's best for our students. And I look forward to continuing this journey with this, this plan. And I, I like this. And I do, I do not like the grade band fluctuations going through, looking at these different proposals. That's, that's silly. Trailers, you know, I'm not a fan either. I think I was a student in a trailer in the 60s and it sucked. You know, I was only a little guy. So, I can imagine what it would be for others. What is the difference here between closing John Muir and Green Valley, between the 5-3-2 plans here, the build arounds?
Just that John Muir is a site that we plan to build in the elementary, so it's Yeah.
All right. So, that makes sense. So, you know, with that being said, I do believe this 5-3-2 model is probably our best consolidation. And I like the idea of, and I know it may be devastating to some people about tearing down a building right away. It's like pulling off the Band-Aid really quick, but we need to do something. And it's been far too long since we've been on this board and we've been talking about it, that, you know, we're going to get this done, we're going to consolidate, we're going to, we're going to make things better for our schools, and we just got to, we got to do it.
I agree.
Just, we have to do it.
So, I appreciate everybody's comments, certainly. My question is, I'd imagine you want to let this sit a little bit. I mean, this is pretty significant. We continue to be open for questions. Again, there's a decent amount of time between now and June 9th, so I still think June 9th is a pretty good timeline, unless you guys correct me. Certainly a good timeline for our purposes in terms of staffing and notifications, but I think it gives you guys enough time to think of questions and
Could you indeed check on moving up the eighth grade, eighth graders, letting them enroll in the schools as they would before then? That way, if we needed to
We have those questions. School of choice, deadlines and timelines, juniors with the original diploma, busing, and I guess eighth grade really is the school of choice piece. Okay. Thank you for that. Our second major piece that we'll move through, and again, no necessar, it's not necessary to make a decision this evening, but we want to start to put these facts and figures in front of you. So, our third piece is building our future costs. And we wanted to, to first update you with the, with the cost piece that we received very recently from the OFCC. They did a cost update for 2022. It was a 28% increase. 28% increase, which is mind-boggling, but I think we all sort of understood that we were probably going to see some number like that. So, what we did was, was the first chart is, you know, what would be the cost of doing each of these phases, first, without OFCC funds? And so, the second column is, okay, so if the elementary phase, so four K to four buildings, one of them having first step as well, 176.4 million millage without applying the OFCC fund. So, you know, first phase, 3.53 mils. If you take the 37% of the portion of that project, that's 57 mils. If we were applying, or 57 million, I should say, if we were applying that 57 million, it brings it down to 119.6 million. So, the millage with the OFCC is 37%. So, again, it's showing you, essentially, if you do this in phase one or phase two, what is the difference? So, we did that through with the middle and the high. Couple assumptions, we add 15% labor costs. That is because of the fact that we have a PLA in place. We are transparent about that. We understand there's differing opinions about a PLA, but we account for that in our, in our cost estimates. We only assume an auditorium in the middle and then a pool and an auditorium in the high. Now, there are some other LFI's that we can talk about. LFI's are locally funded initiatives. They are not co-funded, meaning we will never see 37% for that entity. We won't see 37% of the cost of an auditorium seating. They co-fund a stage but not the seats, because the stage can be used as a classroom. We'll never see 37% of a pool. Now, we can all talk about maybe some other bells and whistles, so to speak, that could be really great amenities, and I think we should have that conversation, but we're not showing that this evening. We're certainly, we're just showing, you know, the core of the building, instruction, all those things, and then an auditorium at the middle and a pool and an auditorium at the high. So, at this point, if we went all in, we're at 11.23 mils. It's a $561 million proposal. My reaction as well, Mrs. Broatz. To me, if you remember back to the Building Our Future Committee meetings, we talked about, at that time, it was around a 7.87, somewhere in there. And so, the conversation was, do we sit out? Do we go? There was almost no appetite for phasing because of our pretty poor record in terms of passing new money, well, very poor record in, in terms of asking for new money in, in our communities. But to me, this 11.23 mils just eliminated that from the conversation. I, I'm an optimistic person. I'll always say very great things about our projects. I'd have a very hard time knocking on doors of a $200,000 home and saying, can we have $65 per month? I just don't see that. You can crack me and push back if you want. I'm just presenting my, my point of view at this point. So, given that, given that that seems to be really an almost insurmountable task, could we start to look at potential phase models? And this is where I think there's some room for some excitement, because I think that when you look at some of these lower numbers, I think it is palatable. And quite frankly, I think it's palatable for this November, actually. So, if you looked at, and again, five different models, because we can combine and do different things first or second, but if you look at step one and you say, okay, let's, let's, let's just do the high school. Let's build the most opportunities in Ohio high school right now. Let's do that first. That would be a 3.75 mil bond issue. Now, now we're starting to talk about some numbers that could be doable.
That's doable.
That's $22 a month for a $200,000 home. And that's something I think we can sell. And I know there's some negatives out there, and I know, you know, what Nextdoor says, but I got to tell you, when we actually get people to listen and start to see some of the modeling that we've done and how we have different pods and different wings, minds change. I saw the Greenbrier the other night. We did a brief presentation for their PTA and a woman raised her hand at the end and she said, listen, I was dead against one high school. I've read all the things online. I've read all the things on Facebook, but boy, when you lay it out, when you explain it, when you show, okay, I can get there. So, that type of number, I think is palatable, and I think the more we educate people, I think the better chance we have. I think that's always true, but I think even more so with this one high school stigma that exists. Then, when the OFCC funding really came through, because now we're applying their percentage from the high school to the elementary and middle school, now we're only talking about a 2.69 mil or 2.96 mil. So, the numbers come dramatically down when we're able to apply the OFCC funding. If we had asked for that 11 mils on the front without any OFCC contribution, to me, that's daunting and insurmountable, but when we start to phase it, you're seeing numbers that make more sense. Model B, Saruda, I remember you very specifically sitting right on the stage saying, you start with the elementaries. Potentially, that's still where the board wants to go. We're at a 3.5 mil bond issue. This is four new elementaries by the year 2026, 27. Middle and high can come back later at 3.18 mils. That's, by the way, anywhere you see those two asterisks, that's where we've applied the cops. We know that through that session with Mr. Manilov, we have room for one, one mil of cops. Model C, elementary and middle schools, first, a little bit higher. Now, we're at 5.48 mils, and that's with the cops. Obviously, you're talking about, you know, your three secondary schools are going to be your biggest bite of the apple at that point. I'm sorry, elementary and middle schools. You come back with a high school, 1.23 mils, so it's pretty palatable at that point, but that's because you asked for so much upfront. Middle and high schools goes first. That's really your most expensive model on the front end. That's 6.7 mils. However, you come back in your elementary is sort of a soft toss, because you're able to convert all of that OFCC funding into the elementary school construction. Final one is elementary and high schools first. Again, we just played around with all the different combinations, 7.27 mils. We're getting up there again, $21 per month, but my gosh, we'd, we'd get a credit from the OFCC if we did that first, which is pretty unbelievable to me. So, a number of different options, and again, we do not have to answer this tonight, but we need to start having these conversations. My next piece that I'm going to kind of lay out for you is a timeline, but I wanted to see before we go to the timeline if there's any questions about any of these models. Steve?
Yeah, real quick, so there's no confusion. There's, and the model D, it says middle and high, well, middle and high schools. Never mind, now that I read it out loud, I changed my mind. Never mind.
I understand why you were asking those.
I was like, was it, probably had more.
It's middles and high school. Yeah, I get it.
So, okay, so my question revolves around A and B, which essentially is the, like, you know, sticking question, high school or elementary schools first. Can you let us, can you find out, based on if we approved the green highlighted 5-3-2 consolidation, which one of those would save us the most operating cost year to year? Because it's only 63 cents difference a month per $100,000 house, so less than a dollar per month. But if that less than a dollar per month is going to change substantially by millions of dollars in savings a year on our operating side, that's what I would like to know, because I think that that should dictate where we go, because the need to not need to ask for operating money sooner is going to allow us to come back to the table for the second phase.
So, you're asking which of, between A and B, make the most impact in terms of operating?
Based on if we consolidated to the green plan.
Right, but the green plan would be immediate.
Right. So, but, I mean, so we'd have less, we'd have already captured a bunch of savings here anyways.
Right.
So, once that savings was all captured, if we built a brand-new high school first, is that going to save us more money? Or if we built the elementary schools first, is that going to save us more money operating cost-wise?
No, it's, it's a good question. I don't have
I figured you wouldn't have it right now. That's just a, I really would like to have that.
That's a good question.
Yeah, that answer for the
Being able not to be able to go back to the voters for, A, we need operating levy now.
Right. And to be able to explain to them, we did it this way so that we don't need to do that.
Exactly.
And so that we have, you know, being cognizant of your tax dollars, where we want to use them again later down the road.
There you are using logic.
See? Listen, I got to go home and face the husband who went to Palmer Senior High.
Is there any way to figure out what it would be if we did high school, elementary, and then middle, instead of combining the high school and elementary at the same time or the high school and the middle schools at the same time?
Oh, quick question.
High school, then just do the elementary?
So, that's up, up top, really? And you can phase it together that way?
Yeah, because, because one of them ended up being free. So, I mean, how, you know, E was where they ended up being free. Being, moving, moving that OFCC money around, what would it do if we did?
If we
Because we're going down to Valley Forge and, and Normandy in the 4-2-1, and those aren't terrible, quote unquote, places for middle schools right now, but our elementary schools really need addressing. And if we're clearing Parma, you really need to do that. So, I think maybe if you were going to phase, if that was a possibility to go high school, then elementary, and then
So, three steps, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the place where that, we come closest to answering that would really be that last column. So, say we went high school first, 4.75 mils. If, if we knock that down with a, with a cops issue, you're at 3.75. We would later need to turn around and go with a 2.03 mil bond issue and a 2.39. Both of those will come down somewhat because you're applying the high school's contribution.
But wouldn't you be able to apply the middle schools or the elementary schools' contribution to the middle school then too? So, like, the high school contribution would apply to the elementary, and then the elementary's contribution would apply to the middle, right?
Yeah.
It depends when it came through. I mean, you wouldn't
Oh, if we waited till it tagged?
Yeah, I mean, if you got it in time for that second phase, you wouldn't apply both to the last phase.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Right.
Did you, what order did Stromville do their schools? They did
I have no idea. I don't think they've done the high school.
No, not yet. North Royalton.
No, they just had the middle schools.
Tiffany, do you know?
They just have a middle, and I feel like they did something with elementary.
They haven't done a high
High school was relatively new, though, anyway. I mean, relatively new.
High student taught there, 20 or 22 years.
So, it's 20 years old.
Is, is there
I didn't say, I thought it was built in the 70s.
Is there any opportunity for us to, if we phase, improve our OFCC percentage for the second phase?
It's possible. I, I, numbers have moved both ways for communities, so it's possible to get better. It's possible to get worse.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's, it's not just based on your community. It's based on all of the communities in Ohio and how we compare. So, if you've got
1968.
You know, the southeast portion of the state that goes through some type of bad recession, they can actually start to get their numbers, climb up and climb up and climb up, and that, that drives our number down. Our number's how we compare relative to the state, not specific to Parma. Now, I'll also, and I'll try not to be long-winded, but we are setting up a meeting with the OFCC, the person ahead of Bill Prentissel. Bill Prentissel's been in contact. I think some of you have met with Bill Prentissel in the past, and he's very responsive and very helpful. But my frustration is, how do we move up and when is it going to be our turn? I ran into Shaker Heights' superintendent, and I just can't understand how Shaker Heights, it's their turn right now. They pass bond issues all the time. Every four years, they put about a 9.5 operating levy on and they pass it. And yet, somehow, they're matching us. They're at 37%, exactly, and they're on. So, I know if I have that question, folks in the community are going to say, wow, you keep saying, well, one day, one day, one day. Like, could we start to zero in on what one day can look like? Like, and how Shaker Heights can be ahead of us? And I don't want to get negative and cynical about how that process works, but I've got to be able to better explain it, because right now, that's frustrating to me.
I have a hypothetical question. If you have this meeting and they go, oh, by the way, one day's next year, like, do we have the conversation about just holding the whole thing till next year? Or is that like a
No, I mean, I think we could absolutely have that conversation. That would be a very significant change in
Like, if they, usually they pull in the first quarter. So, if they say your, Palmer Senior, or Palmer's schools are going to be up, it's going to be your turn next year.
Of 2023?
Yes, so that we would have to ask for 37% less on the total bill all in one shot.
Okay, what you're saying.
That was, yeah, would we just go one shot then, so it was done?
Instead of doing November, just waiting.
Because if we only did a phase, then, do we get stuck? Like, if we, say they say our number
Like, if we, say they say our number's up.
Yes, if you lock in and do your first phase, that's your number forever.
And so we don't want to do that, though. We want to be careful, because that would be my fear, is that we'd get stuck there. If they're going to call us early next year, is that we would get stuck and then not be able to capture the 37% on the second two phases?
No, we always get the 37%. It's just, it just wouldn't fluctuate.
Oh, okay. So we still get it, so how many years do we have to put those additional bond issues on the ballot?
Honestly, I don't think it expires, as long as you've done something, but I'd have to ask. And it's, it's a very good question to ask them.
Mrs. Karpis, Lakewood did a three-phase for their schools, and that was over about a 10-year period.
So after they called their number, they did three sets of bond issues?
Three from bond issues.
And it always stayed the, they always matched?
I can't tell if the percent stayed the same, but they did in three different phases.
Gotcha.
What'd they start with? I really don't remember. All right, I won't figure that out.
So again, no need to answer tonight, but wanted to start this conversation. And I guess the last piece, because, and I think this piece is important, too, so where do we go from here? And so I gave you the timelines, both in hard copy and electronic. So April 21st is this evening. We did want to use May 3rd through 5th to allow that Building Our Future Committee to provide feedback into phasing options. Again, not anything that locks us in, it just, it's good to have, you know, a group of community residents that have been locked into this process. I'd love to hear from them, and I think that's good data for us. May 10th, I think it's time to start being pretty aggressive about doing some town halls again. We have very significant issues with both consolidation and phasing, and it's important to listen to our stakeholders. So we'll have one in person right here. May 17th, we'll be on Zoom. We wanted to provide both options for people to either come in or simply, you know, participate from their comfort of their homes. May 19th, I thought we would have another work session. I am going to have to ask you for some different suggestions besides pizza and Jimmy John's, because we've had a lot of these now, and I think that's getting old. But beyond that, I think it's important for us to.
Wait, 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 don't you pick the menu?
I do.
Well, then.
And I just don't have any other ideas, because I'm.
You just don't have any.
Just, I go to two places all the time. Chipotle would really get confusing, and quite frankly, we might lose one or two of you between the work session and the meeting, so.
Oh, no, that is wrong. So, real fast to that question, that was a different Lakewood. So Lakewood started in 2013, and they passed a $50 million bond issue, and it was for three elementary schools and half of a high school. So that is, I don't really know how the, that worked.
Do you know, Sean?
They renovated half the high school. I think they knocked it down, it was like build around kind of.
So it was a split build?
They knocked it down, and they did improvements, and I think in phase three, they did more work at the high school.
Did they tear down the rest of the high school then?
I think they pretty much renovated the whole, it's on the same property.
Right.
And I think they've renovated the whole thing, but in phases.
Okay, wow. That's something to consider.
There's no room there.
There is notes here, though, that there was extensive cost for asbestos abatement during the process of the construction in the partial part of the school.
Say that again.
Extensive cost for asbestos abatement during the partial, like, just renovating the school.
Uh, carrying forth, we'd move to the June 9th, where we'd really like that resolution in place by that point, as we've discussed. Consolidation will be effective for August of 2023. Come back, and again, we think it's time to be aggressive with town halls and see what people are thinking. June 14th, another town hall, June 21st, another. At this point, we're just explaining consolidation, because you've already decided what it is, but, you know, let's, let's make sure we explain, let's show people a five-year forecast, let's talk about how we don't want to have a dead man's curve effect right before 2026, and we're trying to cut $25 million from the deficit. At this point, we look at a work session to consider the bond issue, and, you know, if the answer's we're not going forward, well, then, you know, that's, that's the answer. Our hope is that we, we consider a smaller number and a phase. The first reading would be July 14th, second reading would be July 28th. So that, that outlines the timeline. Again, we don't need to have any specific decisions tonight, but I think it's important for you to see what process we're envisioning.
August is the deadline.
August is the deadline. What's, about August 4th, Sean?
August 2nd.
August 2nd, so July 28th is in plenty of time.
Somebody asked about the deadline?
Yes.
All right. Well, very good. Thank you, very thorough. I look forward to moving along here and seeing what we can come up with.
Thank you.
And that's, it's not an easy decision, I know, and it's not for anybody. So with that, any questions, last comments before I close this off? Nope. All right. So then I move to adopt resolution 2022-04-125 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-125. Roll call, Mr. Nucio.